Council Agenda Regular Agenda of May eighth, excuse me. City of Lamarck, City Council Regular Agenda of May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, beginning at six P M. in Council Chambers at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with Section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer and the Quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting location on Channel sixteen and via YouTube. Council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Here, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember District A?
Present.
Councilmember District B?
Present.
Councilmember District C?
Present. My address is two zero eight Washington Street, Mojo, Oregon.
Thank you. And Councilmember District D?
Present.
Amen.
Present. Let us stand for invocation. Mayor Pro Tem, would you lead us in our invocation? Councilwoman McCullough, would you lead us in our place, please?
May we bow our heads? Almighty Father, we're here today as a community to do the work of of our of our citizens and the work of the people. We are grateful that we have opportunities to engage with each other in in this form of democracy that we have. And we're grateful for the opportunity to engage with our residents. And also, we're grateful for individuals that step forth and are willing to serve on our boards and our commissions and to run for these positions that we have in our form of government. Keep us strong, keep us healthy, and in your holy name, we always pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands as a nation, a republic, the individual, liberty and justice for all.
Item four, citizens' participation, limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, give the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, address, and item you wish to speak about, compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you are visiting with us via phone, you may press star six to mute and unmute yourself when you speak. If you are visiting with us via the Zoom platform on a smartphone, tablet, or computer, there should be a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen. You may use it to mute and unmute yourself when you are attempting to speak. If you are visiting with us in the physical form, you may approach the podium to my left and to your right, again, giving the presiding officer your name and address, and you will be heard. If any, are there any persons online wishing to speak tonight? Are there any persons online wishing to speak tonight?
Yes, this is Gary Segranian.
Yes, sir. Would you give your full name and your address, please?
Absolutely. Sorry, my my connection is a little weird. I am in California. The address that I own the properties, eight two one Laurel Street in Lamarck, Texas.
Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you. I've owned this property for a while. I just wanted to introduce myself, and I emailed to you, I believe, Mayor, and to our District D person as well, Councilwoman. Wanted to see if there is anything that there's any plans for that property, if you guys have any interest. I'm definitely open. I live in California, and I have some partners that want to invest some money in that specific city. That's it for me.
Very good, sir. Thank you. We are in an open council session, so we cannot respond to you in any way other than saying that the city manager is present, and I look forward to him reaching out to you for a discussion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
God bless.
Any other persons online wishing to speak?
Yes.
Hello?
I'd like to speak.
Name and address, please.
Lowry, twenty-five oh three Cedar Drive. I wanted to bring up a couple of things. One of them is, I I'm still concerned that we have Randall Aragon employed at the Lamarck Police Department. Passed the law last session requiring a city that hires any law enforcement officer to reach out to every department they've worked at. And in doing so, they would find that Mr. Aragon has had numerous dishonorable discharges. When he was hired here, the process was not followed properly. The city of Lamarck didn't obey the law and and do what was supposed to be done, and I think it needs to be corrected.
Ms. Lowry?
Yes, sir.
You can proceed.
Okay, it was, I couldn't hear if it was going through or not.
Yes, sir.
The other thing is, last last council meeting, the text message from one of the board members about how to destroy my business was read for the public to to hear it. And there's been no action taken against that board member. And during the during the reading of that, he was very happy about it. He bragged about it in in the in the back of the room there. He was laughing about it, and he said, yeah, I said that. So he took ownership to it, too, even though we have, you know, documentation. But I think it's important for the city of Lamarck to address these kind of people and realize that it's not good for an image of Lamarck to have a a citizen that is wanting to destroy people's business and and put them as a board member in the community. I think that's a very poor decision. I've made numerous complaints about board members, even having board members go down to follow my divorce proceedings, and not one time were those documented through Kiara. And we put in open records requests for those, and there's no documentation of those being found. And I have the email still. So I think the city needs to take a real hard look at the people that they have on boards and look at their character. Are they trying to help Lamarck? Or are they trying to destroy citizens' businesses? That is all.
Thank you, Justin. Any other persons online wishing to speak? Any other persons online wishing to speak?
Yes, I would.
Hello, Ms. Ginger. Name and address for the record, please.
Eight oh, Ginger Manette, eight oh nine Grassy Knoll Trail, Lamarck. I don't know if this is the right spot to comment or not. I just realized that the rezoning was on the agenda for tonight. So will there be, will we be able to speak on that? Or that's what I want to speak on.
She should speak now if she wants to speak.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Ms. Manette, the city attorney has advised us to to hear you now.
Okay, we did survey with the developer. Of course, there's people that wanted a steakhouse. I don't understand how it's back on the agenda so quickly. Y'all can't answer me, so I mean, I don't, do I not get to speak when that comes up, or?
Well, but you're being heard now, and we can answer that question in that agenda item. We can't answer it now because it's it's basically a public hearing. It's allowing you to comment, yes, ma'am. But we can have that addressed in the in that agenda item, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So I can speak when that agenda item comes up?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. We, one of us, we can bring that question forward. We're hearing you now, and we can bring your question forward, and when that agenda agenda item arises.
Okay, great. Yes, so my question is going to be, how is it on the agenda already so soon? We just did the survey, I don't know, last week. Nothing was decided. I mean, I don't know how the council feels. I don't know how it's going to go. I still think it should wait till all the development is done in this area. That's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Ginger. Is this a point of information?
Yes, sir, it is.
Proceed, proceed, Gus.
Question. When we this come to this agenda item and the report that's in our package, we have the privilege of utilizing and calling upon the individuals that are referenced as a resource. Is accurate?
If you if you if the council so chooses, yes.
Well, and they, I would, I hope that 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 occurs.
If if that occurs, Gus, then you advise me at that point, we'll proceed.
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ginger. Any other persons online wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing them, we're moving now to those that are here present with us. Jose Ramon Diaz.
Mayor, he's outside speaking. It's time, can we move him to the back if that's possible?
Mr. Diaz, are you ready to speak, sir? Would you get, welcome, would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Jose Ramon Diaz, twenty-five twelve Stonewall Street. And I'm here because I had the same problem that I keep complaining about, the ditch water. There's water in it. Your guy can't even cut the grass in it because there's water in it. And mosquitoes froze everywhere, you know. And another problem that I have is the street light. Man, I was six months, and I've called over a dozen times, and she listens, say, well, let me email. And the lighting's in back order. What's up with that? Mostly everybody on the streets are elderly. I mean, you know. But, you know, you gotta need to do something with that ditch because we can't even sit outside, you know.
Yes, sir. Mr. Diaz, we're staring at you because we can't respond to you.
Right, same problem, same problem, three years.
Yes, sir. We understand. You're you're I'm, I hear you. Your councilwoman is here present. The city manager is here present.
Yeah, well, I'm talking to him, I'm talking to Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Robert Mitchich. Welcome, Robert. Name and address, as always, for the record.
Robert Mitchich, twenty-four North Turle. This is short. This is just about the recall on Councilman Carlson for District C. That continues, and we'll do so, bringing some documents that I want y'all to see because it demonstrates one reason why this recall continues and that I hope that y'all can see the light that this situation of an absentee councilman just does not work. Could pass those to him. I appreciate it. That's all it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Heath Henry. Mr. Henry, name and address for the record, please, and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I am in here in a different capacity than you typically know me, here in my day job as the Director of Public Policy for the Family Service Center for Mental Health and Well-Being. We just really want to say, first of all, thank you, Councilwoman Yancy, for your Stop the Violence Initiative. We are really grateful for that. We are an organization that's been around for a hundred, a hundred plus years, and I would be remiss if I did not introduce my colleague, our Director of Business Relations, Cynthia Smith. She's also here with me today, and we look forward to a potential partnership. Again, so this is our formal introduction. Congratulations to you, Councilman Capion, on your reelections. Again, thank you, guys. You guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Moving now to item five, ordinances, discussion, possible action regarding approving. Five, one ordinance number, letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 three, amending the city's zoning map and comprehensive plan by changing changing the zoning regulations of real property, commonly known as fifty-four oh one FM seventeen sixty-five Lamarck, Texas. This item was tabled April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let's get that question answered, Gus, before Mayor Pro Tem starts. Are we going to, are you going to advise me on whether or not I can allow Ms. Manette as HOA president to participate?
If that's the council's wish, the council may hear from Ms. Manette. The council may hear from the developer or the applicant. That's the council's purview. I would also say that while I have no idea what will happen tonight on this, should it pass on first reading, there would, of course, be a public hearing before the second reading.
Very good. Council, are we wishing to hear Ms. Manette tonight?
Yes.
Does anyone have any objections to that? Is the developer here tonight? May you proceed forward, sir? Mayor Pro Tem, did you want to, you want to start by adding Ginger?
Well, I would get Ginger still on as a resource and.
Ms. Manette?
Corey McCoura was also trying to log in. He's the HO president for Delaney Coles.
Okay.
Trying to log in.
Ms. Manette?
Yes, I'm on.
We're going to allow you to participate in your capacity as Sawgrass HOA president. You can proceed with your question.
Well, my question is, how is it already back on the agenda to get rezoned? We talked with Michael, and we did a survey, didn't have very many responses, as usual. So I mean, nothing was discussed. What what's going to go there if it's rezoned? We have all this other development going on around us, and our water pressure is already horrible. Everybody complains about the infrastructure, but yet let's add more, and let's add a business, and let's add more traffic. The traffic, I mean, I don't know if y'all come out here around seven thirty in the morning, five thirty in the evening. The traffic is already horrible. That's all I have, I mean.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Still against it.
Gus, or Caesar, did you want to attempt to answer that question?
I I would be happy to, Mayor. What is before the council tonight is just a rezone application. That is to rezone this from single-family residential to the general commercial zone. That is the only thing before the council tonight. What the the idea of what goes there? I'll be candid, I don't know. But when we reason, when the city undertakes to rezone something, the, should that rezoning be successful, the applicant is allowed to do any of the permitted uses in that zone. That's this idea that the city can, and and while community involvement is important for rezoning decisions, it absolutely is. The council should be aware that if it is rezoned, any permitted use in the gen, if it is rezoned to general commercial, any permitted use within that district would be allowed. Okay. The, a, yes. No, you're fine, you're fine. And that's what's before the council.
Very good. Council, do we have any questions for the developer? Caesar, do you want to add something to?
Just to go further, the memo that that's before you tonight is a direct, a very prompt at the time that we put this out. Responses thus far collected from that survey that were made available, that's what's on your agenda as far as backup tonight. Very preliminary, as Ms. Ginger stated, responses thus far. However, it is what we have to date as of time of posting of of this agenda. I have not had a chance to follow up how many other responses may have come forward, but that's where we stand as of time of 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 posting and 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 printing the actual agenda.
So I I do have a question. So if if this is denied tonight, he can come back within six months?
Because it's after six months.
After six months, because it sounds like that the residents desire more time. And so I'm prepared to vote that we deny the time, and that gives the resident six months to talk with the the developer and determine what what they would like to do.
Well, if 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 we take action, if we take action, that's true. But if we if we don't take action, then then that that does what?
I would in, I would encourage the council to take action for this reason. It it whatever goes there, the there is not a method that it that the council could have to enforce. What, like, if 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 the citizens were to decide, we want a steakhouse there, we're good with a steakhouse. And and I don't know, but if that's one of. It could not be rezoned in such a way that just a steakhouse could go there. That would not be enforceable. And so I I would advise the council against doing something like that.
Sure, sure. Would you state your name and your company for the record, please?
Yes, Michael Hopanemi, Honey Point Development.
Did you have follow-up discussions with the residents?
I had a follow-up discussion, discussion with Mr. Caesar Garcia and also with Ginger and Corey, the presidents of the two HOAs, which I actually thought was a very constructive conversation. It seemed to me that the both of the HOA presidents were very willing to work with me to get feedback from the residents. And I felt that it was appropriate to go through them to get to get the feedback. And after discussion with them, which it became clear to me that, you know, after initial after initial kind of hesitance, they even, they themselves seem to be open to the idea of commercial in the form of a restaurant. They were very happy, and I thank Ginger and Corey for helping circulate this survey. And we did receive twenty-five responses. I think what you guys had may have like twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. I have a few more. I do have updated results. But I think most of the responses came in the first day or two. We had a few more trickle in. I don't anticipate many more to come from the survey itself. So, you know, when it comes to whether or not we have time or we've had enough time to reach out to the residents, you know, the, as, to be frank, I mean, we've been, this is, this application has been tabled twice, and I think we have made the, we have made the effort in the sense for our own research to see what would do well in that community. And I think that there's overwhelming evidence that everybody, I think it was twenty-five out of twenty-six voted for some applications that could benefit them in a with with different types of businesses that they wanted to see come into the neighborhood. with, with different types of businesses that they wanted to see come into the neighborhood. Um, I think we had out of twenty-five people, nineteen responded that they'd like a sit-down restaurant. Um, we've had interest in coffee shop, many other uses. And so I think for us, um, as developers, you know, we want to build something that's gonna actually serve the needs of the residents. Um, but I think, I don't know, I just, I just wanna make sure that it's, it's fair on both sides. You know, I've gone through this process to, you know, do the application since the beginning of February and, um, it's been, it's been tabled twice. We've gotten feedback from the residents. I've been trying to work with, uh, the city and the HOAs is as, as best as possible. So I would really, uh, hope that the council can, can, you know, look at the evidence for the standard of approval for these rezoning applications, um, and find us within that. So, yeah, thank you for your consideration.
You have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I say something again?
Go ahead. No, I'm fine. Go ahead, Ginger.
Um, so Sawgrass has four hundred and twenty-two homes, Delaney has eight hundred homes. He got results for twenty-five people. I mean, that's, that, that's all I have to say about that. And yes, Michael, we are trying to work with you, but at the same time, you have to realize all the things out here going on right now. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ginger. Go ahead.
Thank you. Michael, the issue for me is you originally had this envisioned a residential development. You knew that when you brought them. I asked that question. You knew that when you brought that property out there. And then in your rework, you said this doesn't work anymore. So suddenly you want us to do the work for you. And changing in terms of the re-zoning effort. And for me, that's a very significant effort. We don't know each other, but this city did not have zoning at all. And Mayor, I don't, I think that may have been the first time we met during that effort. I, I went door to door. When I came back from living abroad and said they were proposing to put a chemical plant over on Amber and Road where, um, mainland preparatory is at. And it was going to be emitting fifty tons of benzene toxins into the air. And that's down the street from what a development my dad and my uncles were working on in homes as well. Now, and we didn't have the concept of planned development, what didn't even exist here. And we said, that's wrong. And how do you do, no, no, this is my comments. Okay? And so, so we began that effort. It took two, actually, two different votes. Because not even that petition process worked, but it took two different votes and it passed two times. And then the first zoning efforts was me and other members, three or four, some of them have died already. And we went out and visually identified the lots and residences and brought that back to council and created the first zoning board as well, too. So the, 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 the issue for me is that there's great significance when we change zoning. Because once we've changed that, it, it, as the comment says, as, uh, our city attorney said, any permitted use is gonna occur out there. So it's a Pandora's box. We don't have any idea. We have no control over that effort anymore. And, and, and I concur with Ginger. This is too short of a timeframe. The city manager was very diligent. He said, I'd be reaching out. I coordinated, I'd get people together. And he was successful that. So that's the beginning part of this effort. This doesn't happen overnight. It doesn't happen in three weeks. So for those reasons, I continue to oppose this particular change from residential to, to the commercial. Start that process, continue it, work in some way, and show me that outcome. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments?
No, I, I, I really think that, you know, I love when, when people speak up and I think our residents have spoken up. And I wanna encourage you because I think this is a great dialogue between residents that, cause six months goes fast. Um, but I, but I think that time is needed, uh, for the residents to talk to you and, and kinda communicate. And they're absolutely right, you know, eight hundred homes in, in Delaney Cove, four hundred twenty-two and Sawgrass. And we've only just begun to work. So if we keep working, I think we can come to an, an amicable decision. And I hope to see you in, in six, in six months. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, you purchased the property, you were aware that it was zoned residential, is that correct?
That is correct.
And when you first, uh, approached the city, uh, to develop that property, your vision was residential, is that correct?
The vision originally when I purchased the property was to do residential. And when we looked at the, um, feasibility of doing that, we decided that it was not feasible. Um, we did consider potentially doing a more kind of affordable townhomes type of project. Uh, but we also at that time started looking at commercial applications. And those site plans for those options were all brought, uh, in our initial meeting, uh, when we reached out to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The issue is that you purchased the property. Fully aware that it was residential. Your initial inquiry with the city was, in fact, one that provided for a residential development. Somewhere in there, uh, and I don't care where, but somewhere in there, you, you switched, for whatever reason, to commercial. And, and I understand that from a business perspective. But, but that does not mean that this council has to act accordingly, right? And, and we have re, re, residents that we have to represent. Uh, and at this point, they are not comfortable. As much as, as we value business, uh, and economic development, we value our citizens more. And, and our residents, excuse me, more, uh, and, and we have to do, uh, what is in their best interest. And at this point, they are, uh, concerned at best. Um, and so I don't know that I can vote, uh, in any way tonight, uh, other than to deny this. Uh, simply because, um, our community is not comfortable. Um, and until that happens, I don't know, know that I would even be able to consider it. Appreciate you being here, uh, and I feel for you.
Can I, can I just have a comment? Thank you. I, I absolutely understand, uh, where you're coming from, Mr. Mayor. Um. I, I just wanna say, I, when we purchased it as residential, you know, this, we never even today, never think that we are gonna guarantee get any sort of approval, um, you know, during the due diligence process, you know, that you do take gambles purchasing property. And, um, we do hope to be able to demonstrate that, um, the, the, the commercial application for retail or restaurant, uh, does enhance the community or, um, fit better than a less feasible scenario, which is the standard of approval that we were given. Um, and I'd also just, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments and I know we've heard from the, the HOAs who may not be comfortable, but I do really encourage you to look at the data for what the residents have said. I do have updated, um, survey results. And I think if you look at it, it's pretty overwhelming what the residents do want to see. So I would consider the data for, for what it is. Um, and I'm happy to pass out the updated survey results.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that.
Mayor, I have a few comments, sir.
Who's, who's that? Uh, yes, sir, Michael, go ahead.
My concern is, is as is addressed by some of the residents, that traffic is a pain in the butt out there. And if you bring in a commercial property such as what you wanna do, it's gonna make it even worse. Um, and I, we don't have, we don't have an infrastructure plan to enlarge that area. So that's my concern is you wanna do that, but yet if it's very successful, then it's more traffic to the area, which is gonna even make it more worse for traffic. So, um, that's just something to consider, too, fellow council members.
Yes, sir. Can I add one more comment as well?
Sure, sure.
Thanks. Um, I'd just like to also mention that, uh, the development process from deciding what actual uses and businesses will go in there will essentially, and which also includes taking the time and effort to engage more with the community. Um, that begins for us, once we know that we will be able to potentially do a project there. So the rezoning in and of itself is just for us, the first step of being able to push forward with, um, making sense for us to engage further, um. Because I, you know, if, if we think that there's no chance of getting, um, it rezoned, given the conversations we've had, like, there's nothing guaranteed that much changes with the, uh, the conversations with the HOA Presidents. I mean, we've seen the data, we've seen some data. Um, and by the way, the, seems like this survey was only circulated to homes in Delaney Cove based off of the addresses which I have, which were verified, that were right adjacent to the property. So it seems that in Sawgrass, it was distributed throughout Sawgrass, but in Delaney Cove, um, it was really only the properties right next to it. So we only had five recipients from, uh, Delaney Cove. Um, which all voted for retail applications. Um, there was one person who said no commercial out of twenty-five. So, um, I just wanna say that for us, you know, the, the continued research and engagement makes less sense if we put forth that effort, which we've already been doing, thinking that we're not gonna be able to get this rezoned at all. So for us, we're just looking for a rezone. We'll submit a permit for any potential project that comes through. We're gonna work with the city, work with the, uh, residents and the HOA. Um, to figure out a solution that makes sense for the area and for the residents. Um, so I think getting the rezoning approved is an important first step now for us to, um, for us to decide to really continue forward. Um, you know, we just don't wanna spin our wheels, if that makes sense.
Sure, sure. Uh, question. Thank, thank you for this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it simply says to us, though, it says survey results and it has two questions. How did you, uh, get the information? How did you obtain the information? So did you mail surveys out folks?
No, so I was working closely with Ginger and Corey, who, uh, offered to circulate it to their communities.
Okay.
And so they, I believe that they sent an email or did it online. And so I provided them with a link. They forwarded the link to the residents. I'm not sure in what manner that was, but like I said, seems that Sawgrass was pretty distributed, but Delaney Cove was only five residents that were right next to our property.
And, and the reason I ask that, um, is, is because, um, it would be, I would be curious to know what other information went along with this survey. Because some of the results, uh, of this survey, um, like one person said that they want to see an HEB or Kroger's. Which clearly if, if they would see the, the size of the, the property, they, they would know that.
Right.
Right? Uh, and they're actually, uh, I think eight folks, uh, at the top that are asking for a grocery store, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, they're, they're thirty-two percent of folks wanted a grocery store there. And certainly can't put a grocery store there. It's just not enough land. So, so I'd be curious to see what sort of information went along with that survey. Again, this is a diligent effort and I believe that you are trying to achieve what's best for the, for the, uh, the residents of that community. And I applaud you for that. Um, I just don't know that they're there yet. Uh, they've elected Ms. Manette, uh, and Mr. McCarr to represent them, uh, and it sounds like they are still skeptical. Uh, and, and it is what it is at, at this point. Any other questions? Well, Counsel Gus is, uh, uh, recommending that we take action tonight. And so we will entertain a motion to approve or deny this zoning change.
I make a motion that we deny at the time.
Yes, sir. There's a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item five, two, ordinance number, letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 four, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget for various funds expenditures by decreasing various funds, fund balances, increasing certain, certain expenditures to individual budget accounts in various funds and increasing certain, certain revenues in various funds as set forth in Exhibit A. Caesar, do you want to take that or Suzie? Suzie, are you taking this one?
Uh, it's, it's up to Mr. Garcia.
Go ahead, Suzie. Go right ahead, Suzie.
Yes, sir. Um, this is just a process every year at year end, um, to, to prepare for the audit. So the items on there, either council has already approved it or there's already been an agreement that we, we had to do it throughout the year. So at year end, normal procedures, we always try to make sure that what's being appropriated is more than the expenditure. So that way we can comply with audit requirements. That's all it is. So it will happen every single year at year end before the audit.
Thank you, Suzie. Counsel, do we have any questions for Suzie or Caesar?
Oh, I did, Mayor.
Go ahead, Joe. And then Casey, I see.
Oh, go ahead, Casey.
You won't get, go get.
Um, yeah, it wasn't, it's not a question, um, cause like you said succinctly, Suzie, I mean, none of these expenditures came as a surprise. I mean, these were all monies we've talked about. But it, um, in the interest of the conversations around transparency that we've had innumerable times and how this city is trying at all times to be, you know, not just transparent, but I think there's a difference between transparency and clarity. Um, I think in the interest of that and also for the future council people who will be sitting here, the, the future councilperson who will be sitting in my seat and, um, just along the way. I think it would be really helpful, um, because I know how to look at this now, but I certainly did not when we, when I joined. Um, it is a bit of a number soup, you know what I mean? And I think it would be really helpful, Suzie and Sessar, if there was a, a brief summary of basically what you just said with a bit more detail, you know? This is an accounting of what has already come before you. Here are the amounts, bullet point, bullet point, bullet point that were revenues we did not expect. Here are the expenses we didn't expect. Here's generally where they fall. I don't, it doesn't have to be like audit style summary. Um, Suzie, please, if you are holding your breath, please let that go. Um, but it's just something that really struck me looking at it this time was that that can be incredibly difficult to decipher, um, at first glance. That's all. But otherwise, great. Thank you so much.
And if that's okay, I mean, I can, I can dive right into it right now. That's okay with Mr. Compy on. I realize that he, he has something to say.
Did you wanna go or you want her to respond?
Let me go, Suzie, and this you might be able to hit upon.
Okay.
This, first, first question. The Ters Omega Bay, that's the revenue of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten. And then there's transfer out. Does that mean that we paid Omega Bay that sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars?
Yes, sir. That's based on the report that was sent to us from the county. That's the actual dollar amount.
Okay. Then, um, this, the PID, um, sections, one through, actually, one through five and then another one through five, I guess are the same. But this is out toward Painted Meadows, correct?
Yes, sir. That's to the developers.
That's to the developers and that's part of that agreement out there.
Yes, sir.
On that side. And then this Harvey mitigation grant proceeds, the Harvey mitigation grant proceeds was not three million, one forty-six. It was four million, something. And I understand that that's what we've used here for the first part of our development on our utility enterprise with our infrastructure out, um, in this, the.
This is, this is the CDBG grant. This is one of the CDBG grants that we.
It's not the last one.
Not the last one, no.
It's not the last one. The last one was four.
We have several.
A billion.
Four point two.
No, we haven't received that yet.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to inquire why. I'll find out.
We're, 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 we're working on that process of the application process. We still need to follow the application process.
All right. Uh, because I I know other cities already received it, so if we're not, we're, please. And then the um the other item I saw, there are two, just quick items, and maybe you could explain this to me. You said that there was some transfers that uh there was a negative in the disaster fund that had to be replaced. And that kind of threw me for a loop, because when we had budget discussions, and I went through my notes to confirm this, we, you, you reported to us that there was one million in the disaster fund. Plus, at a later date, you reported that we had submitted our reimbursement requests and that we were receiving some uh some proceeds as a result of that uh reimbursement request. So I'm very interested in knowing, and I don't need an answer now, but I want an accurate, like, you know, an accurate amount that is in our disaster fund uh in anticipation of our hurricane season. Uh, and then the other thing that I noticed on here, and this, Mr. City Manager, I I'm not sure if I understand this, but um under, under that same category disaster fund, it says transfer out ARPA. Is that the American Rescue Fund?
Yes, sir.
This council, to the best of my knowledge, has not authorized any dis- disbursements of.
Disbursement of taking place, yes.
Okay. So what does that mean, transfer out? It says two general fund, and this is another, the other half to utility fund.
Well, that means it, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Suzie.
Okay. What that means is the disaster fund, the American Rescue money is not for a disaster. It's, it's a separate type of of money, and it's, it's, that's why, and I checked with the auditors. And because we have not decided what projects that we're gonna use the American Rescue money to pay for yet. So for the time being, we're just gonna reserve that money in the general fund and the utility fund until we decide what projects that we want to spend the money on. But the disaster fund is really for the storms and events. And then it's not really, uh, the American Rescue money is really not in related to storms or events, things like a disaster.
So when you're asking us as a council to consider these budget amendments to cover all the the negatives here, the deficits, you're saying that this, this will, all these, the negatives are going to come out of the fund balance, and none of the ARPA dollars are going to be touched.
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay.
And and also um we, we as a staff are putting together the final touches on the CIP. So first, you'll have the CIP that was done from all the community beings that we've had. And then following that would be the result of the survey that were also tied to those projects, so we can do those in subsequent meetings coming up now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Any other questions?
No.
Um, Suzie.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem asked about sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars uh for the Ters at Omega Bay. Uh, has that money reached that uh Ters?
Um, at year end, that's where we're gonna have the auditors verify. Yes, sir. It's in, it's in journal entry format. We have the cash, and it just needs to be allocated to the Ters fund, which we have done for year-end purposes. But this is just to, to make sure that the budget column has that as well as the actual to match with the act- actual.
So is, is sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars in the Ters fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is that, is that uh a representation of one year?
Yes, sir.
So, so in one year, that fund generated sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars?
Yes, I ca- according to the county report, yes, sir.
According to the county report?
Yes, sir.
Would that be Cheryl Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask you, so that we're clear, this council uh to Mayor Protem's point has not authorized the release of any ARPA funds. You're saying that the auditors uh have recommended that those monies be in our general fund and our utility fund. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
The auditor recommended that to you.
That's right. It is reserved until council approves what projects that you you want to spend the money on.
Okay.
Right now, it's untouched.
Yes, ma'am. Just, just wanted to make sure that we were clear on what we were saying.
Now, it is earning interest, though, on top of the base amount. So it's not going to stay the same. It's just not being spent. So there will be interest added to it as time goes by.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, we will, uh, Kiera, have we uh had a motion to uh, we'll, we will entertain a motion to approve or deny?
So move.
To approve?
To approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you aye, Michael?
I'm aye.
Thank you. Uh, item six, resolution. Uh, unless otherwise specified, the city manager is authorized to execute all necessary documents upon fa- final approval by the city attorney. Uh, six-one, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero two-six, finding that Centerpoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's application or approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Is that a Gus uh presentation or a Caesar presentation?
This one's on Gus.
This is a Gus.
I ha- happy to present. Um, so the city of Lamarck is one of a number of cities that's part of the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities. Um, Centerpoint has filed a um application with PUC or the Public Utility Commission to increase rates to recover costs um associated with a disaster. Um, the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities has reviewed that cost, found it to be unreasonable, and the city needs to deny Centerpoint's request so that the the issue may be litigated at the PUC level.
Very good. Any questions for Gus?
Well, well, we have a role at that, at that level.
The city's role is through its membership in the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities. Um, the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities is a number of cities. Um, City of Galveston, I believe, Texas City, we, I don't, I don't know all the members. It's a number. Um, and um those costs are are part of the rate process.
I, I thought in our previous discussion, Gus, you mentioned that our cities can only delay this for forty days, but that ultimately it's going to pass.
This is different. This is not what that was. This is something very different. This um is a process where the um, i- if the city did not accept the rate, i- if the city did not accept what Centerpoint wants to do, Centerpoint wants to add a charge onto everybody's bills. If the city didn't, and the city, the city of Lamarck is a homegrown municipality with original jurisdiction over the utilities in its city. Um, through the city's membership in the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, the city of Lamarck could hire a separate attorney to go to the PUC and litigate this matter. But the city's a member of the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, so the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities is going to do it for all of its members that um deny the resolution, deny the rate request.
Very good.
Okay.
What was the, the best result that we could see out of this?
I mean, I I would hesitate to speak for the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities attorney, uh, but the best result would be the rate is denied in its entirety, and the bit, and that charge is not added on to the city's uh to the residents' bills.
Okay. Any uh further questions for Gus? We will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Move to deny.
Second. Are you, are you approving the resolution?
I guess.
I'm just trying to get the resolution approved.
Looking to approve the resolution to deny.
There you go. That's very clear. Yes, sir. Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Item six-two, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero two-seven, finding that Texas New Mexico Power Company's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Sounds like the same thing, different company.
It, it is. Um, I'm sure I don't have to tell council, part of Lamarck is served by Centerpoint, part is served by Texas New Mexico Power. TNMP filed a similar uh request. Um, so this would be, this resolution would be denying that request as well.
Very good. We'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Motion, I'm make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
You did that so much better than Joe.
Approve, approve the denial. Not the rate increase, right?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the uh, the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six-three, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero two-eight, supporting the city of Lamarck's application to the Texas Department of Transportation's twenty twenty-three transportation alternatives set aside TA for uh call for projects. Caesar, is that, is that you?
Yes, that, that'll be uh, uh, regular myself to answer any questions you may have. If you remember about a year ago, we came forward with an application for some sidewalks, both on Main Street, that would go from forty-five all the way to State Highway three, and another one for Bayou Road that would take it from Texas Ave to Maine. Um, thankfully, we were approved for the project for Main Street, which is the one that we're, a thing to get started now. Um, so we have the opportunity to put up the three applications per year. One of the ones that we're doing is there's still a need for Bayou Road. We've also added one uh in this application for Delaney Road, which would take us from forty-five all the way through uh Texas Ave. And then the third application uh would be for the part of the Emancipation Trail, which would take us from Texas Ave on along State Highway three all the way down uh to Maine. So these are the three application announcements. We're allowed a maximum of three after several uh calls for technical assistance with Tech dot uh on these projects. We, we have their support to submit these three applications, and we want to make sure that um we also have yours.
What, what the last one you said? Um, Texas Ave.
Texas Avenue two.
Texas Ave along State Highway three from Texas Ave. It's basically State Highway three from Texas Ave to Maine.
Yes, yes, sir. Texas.
That's a long way. Okay.
Yeah, Texas Avenue to Maine.
Cool. And obviously, if we get a portion of these, just like we've applied in the past for all of Texas Ave from forty-five to that way three, we didn't get the full amount. We, we rewarded them to poche, for example. So we'll, we'll, we'll take whatever they will.
Sure, sure. Council, do we have any questions for these three applications? Uh, Delaney, uh, Bayou, uh, and uh Highway three.
I do have a question on the Delaney one. That only goes up to, from forty-five there to to Texas, correct? Seventy-sixty-five?
Yes, sir. This application would only go to that point.
So my question is, why don't we? Wha- what prevents us from extending that to our new subdivision area of their past Delaney? I mean, past Texas, yeah, the, the request about, the ask about.
I don't want to put the chair before the horse, but I believe we are asking them to provide sidewalks along that corridor if possible. Uh, part of that development, but also because we wanted to stay within our Tech dot right of ways. Um, being a Tech dot application, we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. We could always amend the request to ask for more. Um, but with any new developments, we're asking them to be a little friendlier when it comes to pedestrian trap.
Because I'm just saying, there's no, there's nothing out there now except bitches. And so we're going to have a fine development, but no sidewalks. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Certainly.
So, so you said, you said that he asked you to add that to our request, and you said what?
Correct me if I'm wrong, as part of our development.
So this request is generally for sidewalks. The problem with going beyond uh Texas Avenue is there's one curb and gutter. So you gotta, you gotta do a street.
Oh, so that's the rich part of it.
Delaney has curb and gutters. So putting sidewalks on, on Delaney Road from I forty-five to Texas Avenue is doable.
Yeah.
You, you go south of Texas Avenue, you gotta spend more money.
Sure.
Yeah. Either the developers help us do those roads, or the city takes it on.
And I know at one time we talked about sidewalks for Lake Road. What happened to that?
Lake Road is actually still, and and it's coming to you eventually on the CIP, but you're talking about a major road, road construction on, on Lake Road um from Texas Avenue to at least Cedar, if not, if not farther south. Um, we're looking at storm sewer, curb and gutter streets.
Okay, that's the same.
Sidewalks. That's a major street reconstruction. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But it's in the works.
It is, it is in, it will be in the CIP. You will see it.
It'll be in the what again?
In the cap room.
Capital plan, okay. CIP, okay.
Any further questions? You know, Kiera.
I got a question. So if I understand this right, you guys are saying that Lake Road will get sidewalks. I thought we already approved Lake Road South for sidewalks. Am I, did I misinterpret that or no?
I, I don't recollect any conversation.
And I think we had talked about that, but I don't think we actually, I don't think it ever came back before us.
The discussion, to look into it, if I'm not mistaken, to look into it and see how we could add it in the future and and what challenges we would have. It is on our radar for things that have been requested. But at this time for the application, these are the three that are most formidable.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any further questions? Well, we will entertain a motion to approve or deny Resolution six-three.
I make a motion that we accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six-four, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-three dash zero zero two-nine, authorizing the released uh, release of restrictive covenant, making various findings, providing an effective date. Caesar?
Actually, I would defer to Gus on this one.
Sure. So um, a landowner in the city has approached the city regarding a restrictive covenant that is encumbering property that this landowner is trying to sell. Specifically, the restrictive covenant restricts um approximately twenty-four acres within the city of Lamarck. Um, for, that on, on those, on those acres, they can only use eighteen hundred gallons of water per day per acre. Um, that restriction was put in place in the eighties when the property was sold by a Mako Stewart the third to Peter Laval. Um, Ma- Mr. Stewart and the city of Lamarck, who was not a party to that deed, were given the authority to enforce that restricted restriction for so long as it wa- for so long as there was not sewer capacity, water and sewer capacity available. Um, two things have happened. One, I understand from public works and from city engineering, there is water and sewer capacity available. Two, um, subchapter F of chapter two twelve of the local government code speaks to specifically restrict restrictive covenants and the ability of cities to enforce those restrictive covenants. Put simply, the city of Lamarck does not have the ability to enforce this restrictive covenant. Given those two things, um, my advice would be that the city authorize the release of it, and we can deliver that to the uh seller's attorney, and they can record it.
Very good. Any questions for Gus?
I, I do have one. This kind of goes to our situation and over there on the west side, uh, this release of the covenant.
Yes.
And as I heard you in your presentation or some presentation, and is, is uh anticipating a sale of this property.
As far as I know, you know.
But is that also saying that there's plans in place for a development that are? What's, I, I, what's the property zone right now?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion. Uh, before we do, uh, Gus, I believe that I am going to abstain from this. Uh, I believe there are folks involved in this deal that have donated to my campaign, and so I'm going to allow for the motion, preside over the motion, but I won't say a word uh in, in relation to this item.
That's fine.
I will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Uh, I move that we approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Close.
Yeah, so the motion passed four to zero. Here, show the motion pass four to zero with the mayor abstaining. Item six, uh, five, resolution number letter R dash two zero, two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, zero. Approving a preliminary plat for the trails that would have in lakes, section two. Is that you, Caesar?
That is us. Uh, we are ready to entertain the questions you may have. This is the next phase that, that we have before you, uh, to keep moving this project along.
Very good. Any questions for Caesar as it relates to trails that would have in lakes? Very good. Gus, again, these folks are, uh, contributors to my campaign and so I will preside, but I will not, uh, act in any, any capacity. I will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Will be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here again, show this vote passes four to zero with the mayor abstaining. Item six, six, resolution number letter R dash two zero, two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, one. Authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Galsim County Health District for naloxone. Is that chief? Did I say it right? Who, ah, that's that chief. I was looking at the wrong chief. All right, chief. Do you know how to pronounce this word? Never, never mind, never.
Naloxone is also what we.
Do you know how to pronounce it? Casey, you didn't tell me. Now, that, seriously, talk to us about it.
So this was, uh, related to one of the recent, um, we've had several presentations of Narcan being used. Uh, we have an M O U, um, or, or an understanding now that we want to memorialize on us continuing to have access to those, um, just, just for us to continue to have access to, uh, disperse. Chief, did I pretty much summarize it?
Yeah, this is a simple one, really. Uh, this, uh, Gales County Health District put out an, uh, an email asking if anyone needed in the lock zone. I submitted a request and they gave me a big supply, a bunch of boxes. And, uh, the head nurse, uh, Natalie Givantes, um, came by and delivered. We talked. I guess a lot of, a lot of cities want, were wanting the lock zone. So eventually, uh, they sent out a message saying that if you want to continue to receive it, you need to report what you, you know, the usage, which there was no problem in doing that. Gus approved the, uh, M O U, the M O U's in there and either I could sign it or once approved, if it's approved, or the city manager. Because we, we're getting a free, uh, shipment of Narcan, which is very good to save lives.
Right. So chief, so that we all can understand, um, Narcan is a drug that is used to counteract overdoses.
Correct.
So if someone in our city is having an overdose, an episode where they're overdosing on heroin.
Heroin and, and stuff that contains the same, uh, chemical.
So Narcan would then reverse this, these effects.
Correct.
Do our officers have to be trained in any way to just to, to administer this?
Yes, sir. They're, they're, they are all trained and they, we have a supply for them when they need to use it.
Have, do we, uh, Caesar or chief, uh, will our, um, insurance cover us being trained and administering this, this, uh, drug? It's a new, it's, it's, it's a new service that we're providing. Uh, I know that we have to be trained, uh, if something happens adversely, heaven forbid. We want to make sure that we're covered as a city. I, I want to vote for it. I'm gonna vote for it, but just, uh, just want to make sure that our bases are covered and we may not have to do anything, uh, but I'm just making sure that, right, sure, sure. Um, council, do we have any questions for Chief Argon as relates to this item?
No.
Will entertain a motion to approve or deny?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing them will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, item six, seven, resolution number letter R dash two zero, two, three, zero, zero, three, two, issuing a purchase order to Zone Industries Precision Pump System to provide and install new variable frequency drives, line reactors and surge suppression at the seventeen sixty-four pump station facility in the amount of seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-two cent. Caesar?
Anytime we have a large item like this, I always, uh, ask Rick to lead things off. So if you'd like to throw anything at him, he gets the first win, Rick.
The, um, evening here.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, seventeen sixty-four pump station is a delivery point for, uh, water supply for the city from Gulf Coast Water Supply. That pump station unfortunately had a catastrophic failure last July. When power, there was a power surge on, from, from Center Point Generator tried to come on. We ended up blowing both, both VFDs. That was an unfortunate situation. We've taken our time to look through that whole process. City engineers helped. We brought in electrical engineer, uh, engineering, uh, electrical contractors to look at that system out there because we do not want it to happen again. There was not sufficient protection on the original pumps for one reason or another. Uh, when that generator tried to fire after it lost power and power came back on, those VFDs are very sensitive. During that process, somehow those VFDs basically failed. Precision pumps came out, put in a standby. VFD, we've been running one motor out there, one pump since this has happened. That station actually needs both. The reason we run variable frequency drives on those pumps is they, they supply water into the system and maintain pressure without over pumping water into the system, which would cause overflow at our elevated storage tanks. So the VFDs are very important as far as operation. The quote we've got is from Precision Pump. They're the ones that did the original work. They're a buyboard vendor. They're replacing both the VFDs and putting in surge, surge protection and, uh, surge arresters that will protect those pumps. So this will not happen again. We've also looked at the generator, uh, transfer operation that was checked out by land and sea. We will, we will make sure these, these pumps are operating properly and that they can transfer properly. The A T S, the automatic transfer switch engages when we do lose power. Uh, it's designed to do that. Uh, we need to make sure the VFDs are, are properly spinning down, allowing power to shut down all the way before they come back on. So there's a momentary loss of pumping when we go through a power surge like that or we have any kind of a power issue where we're losing power from the main line and going into generator power. All that happens very automatically and very quickly, but, but everything has to work correctly. So that we do not have problems.
Sure. Council, do we have any questions for Rick? Caesar, do you want anything?
I just wanted to, uh, point that because we're doing it this way, it not void the equipment warranty as well.
It will not.
It will not void it. So we will still be intact there.
One question, I, I don't know, maybe you answered it. I, I didn't hear it. Um, this surge was, uh, the responsibility of what entity?
Center Point actually supplies this power out there. We had them take a look to see if they've actually lost power. They didn't really show that they had any issues.
So where'd the surge come from?
From, from, as far as we know, it came from Center Point because that's the only reason that A T S would have pulled it.
Were we covered?
From insurance standpoint, I, I, I passed that on to, to finance and, and I don't think we've had a firm determination, but if, at, at this point, I would have to say no.
But it has been passed on.
We, we could, we could take another look at it, but, but at this point.
Suzie? Is Suzie still on? Suzie?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you. Suzie, um, we, the, the, the question I had was, was this incident covered, uh, by our insurance?
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. Which incident are you referring to? Pump station.
We're on six, seven.
Item six, seven.
On six, seven?
Issuing the purchase order for Zone Industries to provide and install new variable frequency drives, line reactors and surge suppression at the seventeen sixty-four pump station in the amount of seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-two cent. Question is, uh, did our insurance cover this?
The pump station, yes.
You qualify that answer. What was not covered?
Well, if you're talking about the performance of the contractor, no, we, they don't usually cover that.
No, but the pump station replacement, uh, or the pump station repair, was that covered by the insurance?
We have it on the list, yes. So in case there's a flood event or, or, or anything, then the pump should be covered. Now, if there's a, um, a malpractice from the contractor replacing the pump, no, that's not covered. So
this is covered.
Depending on which part, that's correct. We, that, that should be on the, on the contractor's side to carry the coverage.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, Caesar, would you give us a, a firm answer? Uh, it doesn't stop us from approving this, but we want to know.
I'll make sure what part, if any, if all, whatever, and then come back and report that to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Council, do you have any further questions? Here, are we at, at a motion or no? We will entertain a motion to approve or deny items six, seven.
I make a motion that we approve.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing them will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Six, eight, resolution number letter R dash two zero, two, three, dash, zero, zero, three, three, awarding West Lawn Flood Control and Drainage Project bid to A R Turnkey Construction. Rick?
Caesar?
Certainly, uh, this item is one that we have had lots of challenges with, uh, being that it is for the drainage project at Merry Melody Lane. Um, we have put out the project for bid. Unfortunately, at the time that the grant funds were received, the scope of work was thought to fall within a certain budget constraint. Unfortunately, that was pre-COVID and, and, uh, well before a lot of these things that, that have happened with supply chain and, and whatnot increases. Uh, the project has now come in, the lowest bid came in roughly five to six hundred thousand dollars over the minimum threshold that we have. We have gone back to the funding agency requesting additional funds. Uh, I know that our engineers here present as well. So if any engineering questions are necessary, essentially, we don't have enough to do the full scope of the project. The problem with this is no different than if it was one having to do with the lift stations or we, we can maybe curtail, maybe instead of twenty-one, do eighteen or what have you. This is one of those all or none projects. What's coming before you now is to request funds that were initially requested for part of any water line or sewer repairs um, that would assist with drainage to come out of the, uh, bond that we have set aside for this. Does not preclude us to, to continue asking. We have gone back to G L O and our solo discussions with them. We've reached out to H C A C for assistance and we've also reached out to D D two for assistance. So this is up to that amount because we don't want to lose the possibility of having the project. We will still be aggressive with issuing other forms of funding so we can continue getting more done through this project. Uh, we have a meeting with D D two. We're on their agenda for this upcoming, their, their, their next meeting. And this is a topic that we're going to go to them for, for assistance. This item is brought to you tonight for consideration up to the total amount, should we not be able to get other forms of funding, but we do not want to halt this project. We know how important it is to councils or the residents. And we want to bring this forward so we can hopefully break ground on this project here soon and still stay in line with finishing the project if calendar allows before the end of calendar year.
Any questions for Caesar or Rick as it relates to this project?
Uh, I do have, Mayor.
Roger.
Under the history of this project, I'm curious to understand how a contract is approved in twenty twenty, but then bids are not taken until twenty twenty-three, even with COVID. Um, we were still doing business.
Certainly.
But was that because of our changes and, and staff?
I can't speak for what have happened, you know, before our arrival and, and our tenure working together, but I do know there was some engineering that needed to take place along with some environmental reviews that may have been delayed. So I don't want to speak for any one particular thing to earmark what it was. We do know that we're falling in line to move the project forward now. Uh, we're still within the scope of when we hope to get it done. Only these projects are three to five years out. We're still within that realm. We're hoping to complete it within the three-year span instead of extending it any longer.
Yeah, and I, I, I can chime in a little bit. There was the, but some of the major hangup, I believe, was with the environmental work.
Absolutely.
There was some, some illness in there, um, from COVID, from the person that was actually doing the, the environmental work. So there were some, certainly some delays and I think it went to G L O and it got kicked back and there were some answers, so the, that, 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 that really hung things up with this project a little.
Yeah.
Well, I, 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 I hope that none of our other projects are faced with that. That extensive time period.
Yeah.
The delay between.
Well, Mayor Potem, I will tell you, related to this project, this is the smaller of the bigger three that we're tackling through funding through G L O. We, we, we fear that the rest of them may come in over budget as far as some of the bids are concerned. As far as the timetable, thankfully, this is what presumably from scope wise and took it amount, maybe one of the smaller ones. So we're, we're seeing a delay here because of the environmental perspective. You know, when it comes to drainage, environmental plays a very big role. And, and that's one of the biggest issues that we've had hold this one up, but we don't want to hold it up any longer.
Yeah.
We're asking for your, uh, for, for, for your approval to move this in this route. Should we not be able to get some of the other routes, but still to continue moving the program?
Yeah.
And the, the last item is just for transparency sake and as update on this twenty twenty, uh, certificate of obligations that were issued, let's,
Yeah.
let's account for that. Let's show us what's been done, what's left.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious on that too, as we.
Got it.
And let, let me say this, cer- certainly the bulk of this delay has been the lack of an environmental study. Uh, and this is, uh, apparently was a federal issue. This is something that I know since I've been mayor and that's, I think, January of twenty twenty-one, that's been the issue. It's been, it's been the lack of an environmental study. Uh, and you're saying to us, Rick, that the people responsible, uh, maybe the folks that, that work with the government that provide these studies, that there were some issues in COVID. Is that what you're saying? Or are you saying our people?
Our, our contractor that was doing this.
Our contractor that was working with the government.
Yeah, I believe she had some real health issues.
Okay. So then my next question.
Been a death there when I remember. Dan might be able to help me out, but is that true?
Yes. So, so my next question then would be, um, how much of that delay rests with the federal government? Do we know? And then the question after that would be, um, if, if a significant amount of this delay resulted in the inaction or the inability to act by the federal government. Dan, are you listening, Dan? I'm, I'm saying some stuff that you.
Yes, sir.
So. My question, Dan, would be if the federal government, uh, caused this delay and now the, the cost of this project has risen, how likely are we to receive the additional funds to reimburse us as we move forward with this project?
So, um, uh, from, uh, from my, this is from my, my opinion and what we've seen in the, in the market. If we had bid this project last year, the, the numbers would have been much more significant. Um, there's.
Higher.
Higher, higher. Uh, there's been, the, the costs has came down since, since a lot of, since COVID started because of the, the amount of work that's out there has, has actually dropped. So these bids are a lot more competitive than they would have been last year. Cause last year there were still a lot of construction activity. We, we have seen contractors that are typically don't bid these type of project, actually, you know, put their, uh, put bids out. So I'm actually ha- happy that we, we've seen the, the number of B S that we have. If we had put this out last year, we'll probably, probably gotten half of the number of bidders. Uh, but as, as far as your question, the G L O has actually changed since the, the issuance of this, this Hurricane Harvey. They changed their process on how environmental has been approved. Anthony, with grant workers here, before what they would require is the complete set of plans approvals before they were actually allow you to start environmental review. Whereas, uh, the, the more recent G L O project, that at thirty percent design, they will start the environmental review, which is significantly, uh, you know, a faster pace allows for these, these contracts to move along.
But that's not what happened with this one.
This one.
This one was with the old protocol.
System, yes.
Okay.
And it took, there was a combination of the G L O process and also I think the environmental consultant that was hired as part of this uh, had some health issue that kind of delayed the.
So, so here we are. I mean, I just, business is business. So, so again, how much of this is the responsibility of the federal government? Uh, do we have recourse to receive additional funds to cover the additional expense? And number two, this is business. I understand that COVID was difficult for all of us, but if you're saying to me that we hired a company who who failed to execute, I am so sorry that they had COVID. Uh, but it's costing us five to six hundred thousand dollars. I would like to know, and that may not be something you can a- answer, but Gus, I would like to know if there's a recourse for that. Well, Anthony, can you help us?
Yes, Mr. Ray. My name is Anthony Zalas. I'm with Grant Works. I'm managing a couple of your G L O projects. Um, but to your question, I do not believe there's any recourse that city can seek. Um, y'all still have y'all's allocation from the general land office for this project. Um, but I don't have an answer for your question.
Mayor, can I also, because I've had some some personal discussions with G L O on this and all of our current projects. If their willingness to try to help us attain more funding is an inclination, it's the fact that they are willing to accept some of that. Um, this same group, along with a representative from G L O, will be going to D D two uh, for their next meeting. They are along aside with us to try to help us, you know, attain some of the missing funds. Um, we do understand that. We do understand that it is a challenge. So I don't know if contractually there is any recourse. And I I would have to, you know.
Yeah.
With Gus, but I do know if their response as far in their support so far with this process. I could tell you there's a lot of cities that have been told, too bad, so sad to move on. So I'm I'm encouraged, I would say, just from their responsiveness and their willingness to be part of the fight with us. As far as going out to the elite folks and helping us make those requests together.
Gus, could you um, could you uh? I will share share your findings with the council. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Joe, did you want to jump in?
No, I I was conversing with.
Okay.
Council that take a look at the agreement because I'm curious to know if there's some sort of performance spot as the required under these agreements.
Right, right.
It's usually on the contractor's side, but I don't know if that's applicable here.
So so let's let's try to clarify this before we vote for the public. There was a certificate of obligation that Caesar is referring to, and I believe Joe referred to. It was at twenty twenty, which one did you refer to, Joe?
The twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Uh, and Caesar, you're saying that there were monies left over in that certificate of obligation that were earmarked for uh, street drainage sewage repair. This is what you're saying.
Correct. And my understanding, and Susie's here as well, who was here before some of us. These funds were, um, we went out to bond for them prior to receiving the actual grant fund. Um, the the grant funding that we did for these projects, and there may have been simultaneous submissions at the time uh, according to what we we see, but the purpose for these bond funds was specifically to address some of these items.
So the council approved in twenty twenty certificates of obligation for street and drainage uh, and sewer repair. The county successfully uh, received approval from taxpayers for a county bond, which also repaired streets. They distributed some of those monies to our city, which is why we have monies left over in this twenty twenty C O. Is that correct?
I have to com- I have to confirm if it's the same.
Want to make sure that people know why there's monies left over. We don't want to make, we don't want anyone to, exactly.
Uh, Susie.
I think it's a separate bond.
I'm pretty sure it's a separate, didn't you you were you were here for that.
Yeah, um, the the twenty twenty bond was supposed to address the wastewater treatment plant and the location.
It was the other grant. It was the one that's the forty-eight point nine million dollar.
We receive funding for that. There's there's leftover funding that's can be allowed and reallocated.
Right. We just, right, we just want the public to know. The C E O was approved by council, but because we got a grant. Those monies are now able to be used on other projects. We just want to make sure that the people know before we vote.
Other projects with the same or similar.
Same, exactly, exactly. Counsel, are we clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this, do we have any further questions for Caesar or any of these folks in front of us?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Michael.
Didn't we, didn't we as a council approve this a couple of months ago and we're excited to get that project going?
We approved for the bid to go out.
Okay, gotcha.
Now we received the bid amounts. And hence we're ready to move forward now with what we now know what the bids are.
Okay, thank you.
We continue to bring all bids to you before going out.
Thank you.
In order to make sure we're on the same page before they go out.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, Michael. Please, please continue with your question.
This, it just clicked in my head. This was from, the monies were put aside from a C E O bond? From twenty twenty?
Yes.
Was that, because I don't remember voting on that. Was that a?
Twenty twenty.
It's twenty twenty, Michael.
Well, yeah, I don't remember as a citizen voting for that.
It was a C E O, a certificate of obligation, which is council-driven. General obligations are are voted on by the public.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Casey.
So this this grant award was a five-year timeline of completion?
We've actually had to file an extension.
Okay, so where are we now with when it needs to be completed by?
Our hopes are to get it completed December by December thirty first before the.
But when does it need to be completed by?
Um, it needs to be completed by um, December of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so a year and a half essentially. Okay, and that definitely means we need to get a shake a leg, right? Like, okay, so and it was originally a five-year or it was originally a three-year?
I believe it might have been a two-year.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I'm sorry, Kira, I keep asking you. Do you have a motion to yet? I will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing them will call for a vote. All those in favor. Item seven, city manager report. Submitted report to update council and community on the standard operations of the city. A report can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of the council. Counsel, do we wish to uh, accept this as a whole, or do we wish to uh, allow Caesar Caesar to uh, share with us individual line items? Hearing them will open the floor for questions for Caesar as it relates to the city manager's report. Does anyone have any questions for Caesar as it relates to the city manager's report?
Uh, well, I'm sorry, there was one item award this leading the way in advancing government communicate telecommunications of that. What is that?
Certainly, Mayor, I believe J B is on his way over to discuss that item. We were featured amongst other cities. I apologize for the the PDF that's shown. It was more than a video. It wouldn't come up, okay. So we apologize. We wanted to share a portion of that broadcast. But uh, Lamarck was alongside some other bigger cities, including up to this uh, Boston, wa- was actually one of the ones that was also uh, part of this conversation. Uh, we're doing what we can to lead the way as far as our telecommunications and uh, how we continue to move the actual needle forward. So in response to that, um, we wanted to make sure that we have that opportunity to share care, share and showcase that. And I apologize for the link, I'm being active on that. We tried to bring it up and it's not working. Uh, but but I will make sure to share that amongst all.
Um, I did have uh, one comment. Um, so this is really just my personal recommendation. So the memo about Lamarck twenty fifty and the moving towards the strategic planning and and everything that that will entail. I know that this this council's been talking about that and wanting that to happen, and I think we all know it needs to happen. My two cents is, um, you know, you referenced in there whether we do some of it in-house, whether we get it started in-house, or we bring in a consultant. I do feel really strongly that this council in our city is ready. And really he has a need for it to be, we bring in a professional to guide us through that process. I think, I also think that it's just such an a massive amount of work to organize something like that. I cannot imagine that falling on the city manager. Uh, I mean, I just honestly don't think you'd be able to do it justice because how could you? It's 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 a full-time job while it's happening for somebody else.
Absolutely, and we're we're very encouraged. We've already started reaching out for some assistance from other companies. Uh, we are going to E D C uh, at their next meeting at this Tuesday, next Tuesday, to bring this item to them for for some of that support to do exactly what you've mentioned. After sharing some of our lists with some of the other companies that we've already had a conversation with, they're very impressive. We've already taken such a leap forward to kind of get some stuff started. But um, one of the things we want to do was keep you guys updated in the process where we are, but we are bringing this uh, forward to the E D C uh, at at their next meeting next Tuesday at ten, if I'm not mistaken. So we will be bringing that forward uh, to to garner their support to take that next step exactly.
And H GAC has a has a list of contractors.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good. Any further questions on the city manager's report? Moving forward, we will move now to item eight, new business. Uh, I item eight, one, regular meeting, May twenty second, twenty twenty-three. Discussion possible action regarding counseling, the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting. Kiara, is this your?
This is, um, as you all know, we'll be having a special meeting next Monday to canvass the election and bring in um, potentially new council members. This is just allowing them time to go through their onboarding process and kind of get their feet wet a little bit before we immediately throw them into their first meeting.
Also, any questions? Hang on.
So when would the next meeting be if we don't? If we don't have the meeting on the twenty-second, the next regular meeting would be uh, June twelve.
But we're meeting next week.
We are meeting next week on the fifteenth to canvass.
Be our second meeting this month.
Yes.
Yes.
Although the only thing that we will be able to do at that meeting is canvass the election and give oaths to those who will now be occupying these seats for the next term.
Okay.
I think you're right.
That's fine.
What you said is to give what?
To do the oaths for the two council members.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing them will call for, hearing them will uh, entertain a motion to approve or deny.
I make a motion that we approve the motion to cancel the meeting on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-third.
Is that a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing them will call for a vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? Eight, two, request for new programs and events. Discussion possible action regarding approving a proposal, process for new programs and events in the city of Lamarck. Caesar.
Certainly, this was uh, brought to us, uh, or or actually a action requested from council um, about anytime we would like to encourage or anybody to come forward for any uh, promotions of any special events and or programming. The phone's ringing a lot more than it used to be, uh, and having no formal process to 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 accept those, whether it be a program through our Parks Department or anything that we would have. This would allow us the opportunity to get the ball started on that. So this is a first draft of that, of a pretty much a welcome letter and what it would look like uh, for us to start uh, accepting some of these programs uh, for 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 consideration. So if it's an event or indoor program that would come before then, similar to what we did with the uh, naming policy and and so forth, we brought you a draft. You then assign anybody who you may want some assistance with or any feedback you would have, and they would bring this forward as a formal item whenever we have those items finalized.
Very good. Counsel, any questions for Caesar as it relates to this item?
So, uh, Caesar, Caesar, um, Mr. City Manager, the 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 item listed as the program proposal memo. You you can't, it doesn't pull up. And the way I look at our, as opposed to pulling up the whole three hundred and somehow pages of the package.
Yeah.
I go individually and I click on it and it doesn't pull up. So I was I'll I'll see if it's in, I guess it's in the package and I'll go back, but using this method.
Yeah, that's the one we were saying.
You're, no, it's not.
It's not there? Okay.
I will merge it with the two documents uh, to put it together with the draft watermark. Um, obviously having.
You're talking about the proposal memo.
It's basically a memo. It's a it's a one and a half page of that states. Dear potential program provider, these are the things we would like to abide by. And then it goes attached with this sample of the contract for them to know what it is that they would need.
But is that, is that what we were looking for? Wasn't our discussion about formalizing some uh, some language with regard to your nonprofit coming.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my notes was that, um, well, number one, do we really, have we really not had any kind of facility usage agreement? Period. I thought we had some type of facility usage agreement.
To this point, there's been usage of our pavilion over at Allen Bayou Park.
Uh-huh.
And correct me if I'm wrong, for those that are here, I don't believe we've had anything else.
Well, it's definitely exciting then to create one. I will say it's pretty lengthy. Um, which I think is appropriate depending on the event, right? So I do think that there may be can be some there could be a bit of a spectrum around like, are you trying to host a massive, you know, um, income, you know, generating event? Are you trying to, you know, sell alcohol and have a huge festival? Or are you trying to host a backpack giveaway for fifty kids? You know, I think those two things don't necessarily have to abide by the same uh, strictures. And uh, to Joe's point, yeah, I definitely wanted to see the the thing that was that spurred me last time to request this was if, you know, we have, we had this great organization like the local Lulac chapter that's doing such such groovy work in our community. But also they were asking for some things that felt a little bit um, blurry around like, can we really set a precedent as a city that we will give all of these things for free? And I think, um, I'm going to assume that you felt like, well, in order to get there, we need to develop some of this stuff first. Which I think is fair, but I definitely think that um, maybe in the usage agreement itself, there needs to be some like I said, there maybe there should be a version that is I'm not quite sure because I've have don't know have a lot of familiarity with usage agreements, so. Um, but looking at, you know, I'm sure you did already, but looking at what some of the other cities use. Um, and see if they have maybe different options depending on what what the um, event is. And then just purely having a a nonprofit application, you know, one that is that sort of lays out. Because I would imagine that a lot of the nonprofits that we've been approached by recently are those smaller nonprofits that want to just have small, really kind of grassroots events. And I sure would hate to, I want us to formalize this. I think this is absolutely necessary, but I also wouldn't want to scare them away by like, here's this twelve-page contract. And the last thing I'll say was, um, and I just happen to be, I feel I I have snakebit feelings about this because I've gone through it a lot in my organization is the section around uh, background checks. Is, um, I think it's I don't have a problem with background checks. Maybe I should say that first off. But I do know how onerous it can be for an organization when you say, um, I'm sorry, what section was it in here? It was oh, silly me, I did, I copied it, but I didn't look at what section it was. Um, but basically, the section around any adult basically needs to have a background check. That's a lot. And I was just wondering like, who keeps track of that? Is that something like certainly not the city clerk's office is following. Like, how much are we keeping tabs on that essentially? And I would like for us to think about that ahead of time before we say, yeah, you can have an event, but every single adult needs to have a background check. And what does that mean? You can have background checks that are just the county, you can have the state, you can have the, you know, the nation, you can have, you know, all kinds of kinds of background checks. And I think maybe we, that's one thing that perched my ears for considering how that will impact us, or rather, impact staff time. Done.
Yeah, um, yeah, so so what I've heard about the city of Lamarck is that our process can be um, cumbersome. So I think we need to kind of look at it to make sure that it's fair and look at what best practices, what cities do, it's boys' best practices. Um, and she's right about the background checks that that as well can be a time-consuming, I know, because that's having a staffing agency doing that, because she's right. You know, are you going to do local, regional, you know, and then you have to have the software to do that, right? So, and then, um, that can also kind of open you up to some some things too, for litigation. Because my thing is what we do for one, we need to do for all. If you have, um, the Bayou Fest, so we ask in all the vendors at the Bayou Fest that comes, they have to go through background checks. It's happening on our property. So we got to be careful about that as well. And then what type of rules for smaller uh, venues or nonprofits and larger venues. So, I don't know. So we just, you might want to just look at that as well. But that's my two cents. I I want to make sure that we are business friendly and that we are fair and that our process is not too cumbersome and that most importantly, that we're streamlining it. throughout the entire city. What EDC does, the city does as well, right? So and we're not duplicating because it seems like we're duplicating processes and we shouldn't do that. For example, if I'm doing something that that Lamarck High School and I have to do a liability insurance for that, shouldn't have to do that for the city too. That's two, that's two liability issue. So that's what I'm saying. We have to kind of streamline that to see how that works, right?
Any further discussions?
Quick thought, Mayor and council members. I I am curious to know, following up on comments over here that did we have agreements or do we have an agreement when we put on when we put on Bayou Fest? With with somebody?
Well, Bayou Fest, that's that's traditionally been a actually city event through the chamber as part of that contract that they they have. It's part of the contractual obligation there. We go back and forth. What we're talking about is that now we have an addition a lot more folks calling about programming and this could be of all types. So.
No, no, it's that I understand. I'm just saying as a foundation, we've got to understand what exists. What has the city been doing already? Are we now suddenly creating an entirely new document at which we're now going to be expecting the chamber and everybody else? And Bayou Fest to utilize as well? And suddenly that becomes a burden on on our historically biggest event. That I'm looking at it for, so I guess me approaching it, I would be doing my research. What are we doing with events? What what did we do with the crawfish events when they were out here?
So to answer that question slightly different. We're talking about a special event permit versus an actual program event. For example, one of the things that historically may or may not have been done consistently was when we host a special event, a city special event, we go through a special event process. We can't tell anybody else to follow our rules if we're not going to go through the same process. So we take care of the evacuation maps and 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 your bounty lines and what happened in the case of this and who to contact and point to contact and enough security. Well, this being a little bit different, this is an outside entity who wants to utilize city facilities and or city space or bring a program tied to the city in some way, shape or form. Like they would like to use one of our facilities or be the library, our our parking lot, one of the parks, if they would like to host an event and or a program, whether it's at a youth athletic program, it could be an arch program, it could be anything. And that was to the extent as to the background. It depends on the spectrum.
Yeah. And I think and and Joe's helped me get to where I think we wanted to go. It I suspect that this, so one of the reasons this is so big, and I think one of the reasons it's all sounding really unwieldy is that there's too many potential end users. I think you might need to spend a little time looking at like the examples of these different organizations that have been reaching out and have a list, compile that and show it to council with with your ideas of like, here's what who's, here's the other organization organizations I expect to start reaching out to us and then look at, okay, well, what is really the issue here? Do we have one type of thing that's really been happening or is it all over the place because they don't all need the same treatment and they can't have the all the same treatment?
Like a lemonade stand can't pay.
Yeah. And I mean, and it will also start to point out the things I would imagine that maybe some of these organizations are asking that might be a step more than the city's actually willing to give, you know, because can we actually open up the library parking lot to just anybody who wants to really use it? Or is that start to get into this weird blurry space or, you know, and maybe help, it would maybe help identify what are the spaces within the city that the city's even willing to open up for this type of use. And then I think that those usage agreements would look drastically different.
Casey, one thing, sorry, sorry, I got a squeaky chair.
Yes.
One thing that what kind of bugs me is when you said, you know, we need to look at what city services we're opening up. It's public property. I mean, if somebody wants to use a library parking lot, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't, we as a city should not say you can't do that because their tax dollars paid for it. So if, I mean, we can't exclude one area or one person or one group. So I think if we're gonna, we just leave it up to everybody as far as city usage part. That's my concern.
I think that'd be the type of thing for this future council to discuss. Honestly, I disagree, but
You can get out of it that easy.
I mean, because I just think that there are certain, I agree that that let me edit myself. I do agree that citizens should have access to public spaces that are paid for with tax dollars. But I also agree that there are fundamental places within city business that just because it's paid for with tax dollars doesn't mean every citizen has the right to set up shop and and claim it as their own because it might serve that might hinder its integral function. And I would argue the library parking lot is likely one of those places. But I'm getting ahead of myself again. Like I said, I think that would be room for healthy discussion for for the council. But I do think it points out like, I think you, this is great. And I'm so glad you brought it because here we are having this discussion, but might I I would recommend identifying what are, who are we trying to reach with this kind of document creation and then go from there.
Any further questions or comments?
One quick comment. I'll be right back. I'm gonna go find some WD forty.
Caesar, I think that you got feedback tonight. So I suggest that we not act on this, that you bring this back according more to what the council's vision would be for.
Absolutely.
To Casey's point.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item eight, three. Let me back, let me back up. Council, unless you all want to make a motion, I will entertain it.
No.
Thank you. Eight, three procurement card discussion possible action regarding approving participation in the Tarrant County contract with JP Morgan Chase Bank for city's procurement card program. Caesar.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Susie back. If you have any questions on this item, we brought this to you for additional actions. We found a way to streamline the process and move forward on it a little bit quickly, quicker than than we anticipated. That's what we brought to you at this time. Susie, do you have anything on this?
No, sir, unless there are questions, but we feel that, number one, this has already been publicly bid it. Okay, by a governmental entity, a county. Second, we feel that the package is better than the one that we've been using under the state. We've been using that one for almost ten years as far as I can remember. So in comparison with the two, and you notice on the agenda form, I I noted those items that are new under this this package versus the current package. So again, it's up to council, you know, we we can stay with the current one. There's no problem with that. We can bid it out, but that's going to take longer. Or we can use this one which shorter. Now, just because we bid it out ourselves does not mean that we can come up with something as good as this. It could be worse than this, or it could be even better than this. Who knows, depending on who who's who's bidding and what offers they have. So it is up to council. We just want to bring to your 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 attention. This is what we have and at your pleasure.
Thank you, Susie. Counsel, if there are no further questions for Susie, I will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Here now we'll call for a vote, a call for the vote. All those in favor? Eight, four fiscal year twenty twenty three rural and small department violent crime reduction program. Discussion possible action regarding submitting an application for the fiscal year twenty twenty three rural and small department violent crime reduction program. Chief Argon.
Mayor, city council members and city manager, this is a one grant I could not overlook. It was too good to be true. And and so far it looks pretty good. We talked to Alice Ashley. She's interested in helping us with it. Talked to Caesar about it. It's very simple. It's a Bureau of Justice Citizens Grant. It's for violent crime. And, you know, we have a crime analyst and with the Lamarck Safe City Initiative, year one, it it was approved February twenty two that we would hire a crime analyst on a contract. That's happened. Year three is going to be starting January of twenty four. That would be when the person or persons would become a part-time employee. Okay, year five would be a full-time employee. This would expedite it. And if we get it, we could actually be paying a full-time person totally no match. And I did my research and the range is around seventy thousand for our county. There's only like to check Webster. And that's the range for Webster. And then of course fringe is about twenty, you know, twenty percent. So we're looking at a hundred K total with fringe and salary for, if we get it, it's up to three years and it's up to three hundred thousand dollars. So with that, it's an opportunity. I don't think we need to give a pass up. The crime analyst has done all these stats that you've seen and it's been working out really good. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Do you have any questions for Chief Argon as it relates to this item?
I do. So I also was excited to see this. And my, the main question I had was you answered it pretty much for me, but I was curious why we were not using this grant to focus on that the mental health piece that we've all talked about really wanting and that unfortunately we've had to cut because of the changes to the budget. Because when, you know, I didn't pour over this grant opportunity, I'll be honest, I didn't, you know, categorize it and highlight it. But what I did read, and especially when I was reading through the priority considerations that were listed, is that the the position that we've talked about for a while and specifically a position of a community mental health position, so not the one where we've talked about before that would be serving the first responders first, more of that person that we saw as somebody who would over time be a part of a program where when calls are made that whether they are domestic abuse related or really any kind of trauma related that we have a position someone who is trained to go out, provide resources, provide support to that person and follow up. That seemed to me to align perfectly with the priority considerations of this grant. And so I was just curious about why we wouldn't potentially consider that take advantage of this opportunity for that since we have not been able to really realize that position previously. I assumed that it had to do with the fact that you were just trying to plan ahead financially for needing to bring on that person on staff, the crime analyst on staff. And it sounds like that's what it is, is that you're trying to just lay the groundwork and that's reasonable to me. So my follow-up question is, is there maybe a way that it could be? You know, you said that with, if we were to receive this grant, then it would sort of quicken that timeline and they would be full time sooner? Maybe is there a way? You know, shoot me down, feel free. I shouldn't use that euphemism with the police. I'm sorry. The turn down my suggestion, please. The to maybe have our cake and eat it too, where it's maybe not the crime analyst coming on full time right away, but it's staggering it a little bit and maybe using some funds to help maybe a contract with an entity like Family Service Center or primarily Family Service Service Center is the one that came to mind because that's who we talked about beforehand. Where maybe we have some monies to work with them and to start bringing in somebody from the outside who provides that assistance of responding to the community's needs. Again, I'm not suggesting the first responder part here. It's that didn't seem to align with this grant. All right, I'll stop talking. That was a lot.
No, great feedback.
It's just, it's just what came to mind. If, you know, I would, I would trust y'all, you know, if you felt like, no, it really the best, this is the best, you know, shot is to go for the crime analyst, then I would. I think that's great.
Times of.
Yeah. And also if you don't have enough time to put all that together, I one hundred percent understand that.
Very short timeframe, June thirteenth is the deadline.
Yeah. And I think if you look at page seven of the report, it talks about the priority areas too. And I think that's why you have to kind of stay within that line. It says, the Department of Justice committed to advancing work that promotes civil rights and racial equity, increases access to justice, supports crime victims and individuals impacted by the justice systems, strengthens community safety and protects the public from crime and involving threats, which you could, that could be mental health and builds that between law enforcement and the community. So I think that's what she's talking about, where you may be able to partner with someone or bring someone in there because that that's like, number one about priority considerations on page nine. So we may, you might, but this is an amazing grant. I know you and I have talked about something similar in the past, so I do hope that we're able to get it.
Yeah, regardless, I'm so pleased that we're gonna go for it.
We could look into that.
Any further question, any more questions for Chief Argon? Here now I will entertain a motion to approve or deny the item.
I make a motion that we approve.
I second.
Any further discussion? Here now we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Item eight, five upcoming events, city events and important dates for community awareness. Those items, counsel, are listed before you. Those items are listed in our as an agenda item. So the public is well aware of them. Caesar, did you want to highlight any or all of those?
Obviously, a lot of these are highlighting the work of our staff and individual different departments. One that stands out I'd like to bring everybody's attention is the Great American Cleanup. We're partnering with Texas City on a cleanup of Texas Ave. The flyer, the latest rendition of the flyer is posted for your pleasure. The idea is for Saturday, May twentieth, we will do a joint venture to clean up Texas Ave. We will focus on the beautification, litter pickup, sidewalk clearing as far as if any debris or anything is on some of the sidewalks, stormwater drainage and 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 flow to really help beautify Texas Ave on both sides of of the avenue. We're doing a joint venture together with Texas City. We will start, we're planning on starting at nine AM through twelve. And we will start from State Highway three towards forty five, halfway point being Lamarck High School, where we will have staging refreshments, what have you, in case somebody needs a break or or the needs. This is a Keep Texas Beautiful event. We've already started receiving some supplies from them to help with this. This is along the efforts of the Keep Lamark Beautiful commission that that you guys have always supported. And we continue making strides on picking up pounds and pounds of trash every time that they're out on the person third Saturday.
Thank you, Caesar. Other items you want to uplift?
No, at this time, everything else is in there. We'll we'll highlight those throughout the month.
Mayor, I see that you and Mayor Johnson are going to be out there for that cleanup. And I'm going to place a bet that there will be more refuse and garbage on the Texas City side.
I am. I will be out there Friday, actually, a day early because I'm scheduled to be out of town. But I definitely am willing to take that bet. Don't know anything about Mayor Johnson and how he feels about it, but I believe that we're going to win that one. Any further questions for Caesar on his city manager's report? Let's let's uplift the the National Police Week. That's certainly important as we acknowledge the men and women who protect us each and every day, as well as Public Works Week, who many believe is almost as important as our police, because if our sewer backs up, it's certainly a a big deal for us as as residents. Let's move now to item, there's nothing further, item eight, six items for the good of the order. And this time, Michael, we'll start with you. And we will go to Kim. And then we will allow Casey and Joe to respond. Michael.
First off, thank you for letting me go get some WD forty for my chair. No more squeaks. Everybody that did the hurricane huddle, I saw the pictures. Looked like fun. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to participate in person. But it looked like a great time was had by all. Thank you, Fire Department. Thank you, EM. Thank you, all city staff that put it on. A really great function. I love the pictures. Other than that, that's all I have. You guys do a great job every time and I'm going to say my goodbyes to Casey till next week.
Nobody's gonna say goodbye to Casey tonight. We don't, none of us want to do that. None of us want to do that. Thank you, Michael. Kim.
Okay, I just want to thank everyone for amazing. Okay, I just wanna thank everyone for our amazing Stop the Violence Week that we had. Last week, we had over two hundred people come through the gym, wanna shout out to. All the churches, all the participants, the volunteers, the school districts that wore the shirts Stop the Violence, um. It was, it's, it's, it's an amazing movement of trying to. Have people to, uh, have a choice. When you, when, I always say, when you ask a person to put a gun down, you need to put something in the other hand. And to the College of the Mainland that provided opportunities and, and TWC that provided jobs. Um, as a result of last year, uh, three young men that we talked to. Uh, one that had an AK, uh, forty-seven, A, A, AR fifteen, I'm sorry, uh, he is now in school to be a welder. Uh, the other young man is, is working out of state and unfortunately, one of the young men we talked to last year. Is now incarcerated, but they were giving choices. And we were excited to see that now our violent crime is down thirty percent. Uh, because of working with our chief, our chief came and our, uh, and represented, we had a table where we were actually recruiting. For, uh, police officers, for our young men to apply and young women to apply. And so there's a different synergy, there was a great synergy, and I am just so grateful to have a community. That is really trying to work together and make a difference, and you can see it, you can see the, the images. And the happiness, uh, the happen, the happiness and joy among, uh, the children, that they are proud to be a part of. Lamarck Mayor, I, I wanna tell you that young man that came and spoke to us two weeks ago, he's still talking about. His experience, uh, of talking in, in front of the, the council, uh, with his classmates, and so I am just really. Excited about, um, what. Uh, what God is doing for our city. And though we have, uh, you know, we have some, just like family, sometimes we have bumps and bruises, but at the end of the day, we always come together to get the work done. So I'm real excited about that, um. The other thing is Mother's Day this Sunday. So for those of you that still have your mothers, appreciate your mothers, think of something good to the man in the room. Uh, to do for your ladies, your mothers, and for those of you that, that no longer have your mom, remember her in some way. By doing something special for the mother in your life, someone that, that, that nurtures you or that is your friend. And so, and to my mom, mom, I love you and thank you for always being a good Christian, American woman to me and my brother. Thanks so much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kim. Casey?
I got almost nothing, y'all. It's a, it's a, it's a pleasure as always, um, and a privilege, and of course, I've been ruminating on it a lot and. I'm incredibly grateful for this experience, I have learned so much and I'm so grateful that I've learned so much. Um, at this juncture, uh, you know, as, as, as a young adult and where I am in my career, I feel like so many things are gonna come with me and. Number one is always. Appreciate the people who put together your agenda and all of the things that go along with it, because nothing gets done, nothing gets done if we don't have. Scaffoldling to work with, so as always, thank you to, to every member of staff. Um, everyone up here and everyone who did all the invisible work to get here, you're not invisible and you're so, so very appreciated. And thank you to council.
Joe?
Well, Mayor, one of the great things of, of life is experiencing new things and check, and crossing that off the list, right? So I experienced a reelection. And I'm crossing off the list now. And, uh, but. What's most. What I'm most grateful about was the camaraderie that arose as a result of that. Uh, James Ross was out there, Cassandra Lafferty, uh, Justin McDonald. Uh, uh, Mr. Osteen here was part of our little collaboration there. And we were all gathered together. It wasn't this tradition that you see perhaps, or a terrible traditional mark of, and Mayor, you, you saw it, you came out. And joined us as well, right? A former council member, Mitchnich, all together. Sitting around talking. And, uh, uh, Richard came out, passed by several times, as opposed to each corner taking a piece of the parking lot. And, um, and that's what for me, community is, and I'm grateful for that. And then, um, I also have to thank, uh, the, at least in District B, the hundred and twenty VIPs. I called them the VIPs, those that bothered to come out and vote. I am, I am grateful to them, but I'm also challenged that if we don't. Self-motivate ourselves, we're gonna let our democracy be run by what the very few chosen, whoever those may be. Right, who can, who bother to wake up in the morning, uh, when you've got seven days of possibly voting. And not showing up to cast a simple vote that takes you, what, less than five minutes? It's even touchscreen now, so you can't complain that you can't work the computer. Uh, and so I hope we do better in that regard on that side. I, um, wanna compliment if. Folks haven't noticed that Center Point Energy is they've gone along re, re, um. What is it? Pulling out the old, uh, tar posts and putting up the new, uh, power towers or whatever they're called. Uh, they're made out of metal, I think, or concrete or something, and it's an effort to beautify. I saw them today over at the, uh, high school, um, field. Actually, the gentleman using their hands to go through the fine dirt. To make sure that there was not little pieces of wood that were there that could harm our, our youth in any way that are out there utilizing. And I'm, I'm very grateful to them in that regard. And, um. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, we wanted to certainly announce tonight that, uh, on May tenth, that's this Wednesday. At six thirty PM. Uh, at the Wayne Johnson Community Center, the city of Lamarck will host for the first time in two to three years, I believe. Longer than that, maybe. Will host the Quarterly Mayor and Council Association Dinner, this is a dinner. Uh, which, uh, members of, of councils all across our county, as well as county officials and other elected officials. Uh, are invited to, uh, we, uh, collaborate, we fellowship, uh, and we try to do what's best in that meeting. There is business that. Uh, that is acted upon in that meeting, but it's a time of fellowship and collaboration for us, it's county officials, uh, to try to. Uh, gain consensus, uh, in doing what's best for all of our residents, this great county that we live in. Uh, we're excited about hosting, I believe, uh, uh, Mr. Nichols. Uh, will be the, uh, keynote speaker of this event. Uh, and he is certainly, uh, going to, uh, share his thoughts about those three votes. That, uh, are worth millions of. That are worth millions of dollars, and so we, we look forward to hosting finally. Um, it's been a long time. Uh, secondly, uh, Caesar, there, I, I want to request, uh, and I, I would like for you to provide this. To council, uh, the total amount of funding that should have been allocated to the Omega Bay Turks. Uh, we wanna know a total. Uh, there, uh, apparently, uh, needs to be clarification on how much monies. Uh, that Turks generated, uh, in each fiscal year of its existence, as well as how much monies are. Uh, already allocated in totality. Uh, so that the council can be clear on exactly what that looks like. I wanted to say that elections, as always, have consequences. Uh, and the consequence of this latest election. Uh, is that there are, uh, several of our charter amendments that were passed. Uh, many of them, uh, will help us to, uh, do government better, will help our democracy, uh, with the. With its organization and its implementation, uh, some of them, uh, were, uh, denied by our residents and we accept both verdicts. We accept those that were approved. Uh, and those that were denied because this council did not advocate for any of those amendments. We certainly did, uh, our due diligence as the stewards of this city, uh, according to our charter, and we allowed for. Uh, the, uh, Charter Review Committee, uh, to perform their work. They made those recommendations and council approved them. Uh, and so we are not happy or sad that these things, uh, uh, turned out to be the way that they are. We simply are, uh, moving this city forward according to our charter. These elections also had, uh, consequences, uh, two of which, uh, we are going to, uh, officially acknowledge on next week. Uh, the first of which is, uh, that we now have three more years, I believe, of Mr. Joe Campion. Uh, and all of the wonderful things that that means for this council. Healthier discussions. I'm teasing. That, Joe, congratulations on your victory. Uh, it was definitely, definitely hard fought and it's definitely a highlight of your career. To be reelected. And I wanna say that I'm grateful, uh, at the opportunity to work with you for as long as we both share this dais. Uh, Mr. McDonald is an honorable man, as far as I can tell, uh, and I appreciate his conduct during this election. And I look forward to working with him in the future. Uh, the other, uh, consequence of this election is bittersweet, uh, in that, uh, our longtime friend. Casey will leave this council and, uh, certainly I'm having so many emotions that I don't even wanna talk about that tonight. Uh, I need to deal with that, uh, at a later date, but we also will be inviting, uh, and. Uh, accepting Mr. James Ross to our council. Uh, on next week, and we want to say to James, congratulations, he's here with us tonight. Uh, congratulations on your victory, sir. Uh, you have been entrusted with, uh, the, the will of the people of District D. Uh, and you will, uh, get to know what that means, uh, in your own way and in your own time. But we wanna congratulate you tonight for your victory, uh, Mrs. Cassandra Lafferty, we wanna congratulate you for your efforts. Again, uh, we look forward to working with you, uh, in the future. Kim, I wanted to say to you, uh, I asked you to provide this council. With T-shirts. For, uh, that represented Stop the Violence Week, and so I'm still asking that if you have any available.
We sold out.
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, we didn't, I gave them away, I gotta make some more. We didn't sell them, we sold, I mean, we didn't, we didn't sell them, we gave them away, we gotta make some.
So if, uh. If, if you can do that for us, we would certainly, I would accept it, and I, I assume the rest of the council would love to accept those shirts. I think Councilmember-elect James Ross already has a shirt. How did he get a shirt and we didn't get a shirt? But in all seriousness, Kim.
It's the ones you love that you hurt, you know?
Uh, Kiara, I would like for us to provide, uh, Councilwoman Yansey with a proclamation acknowledging Stop the Violence Week. Because in all seriousness, Kim took the Safe City Initiative to heart when she became elected, and this is her contribution to that Safe City Initiative. So we wanna always honor her, uh, efforts and honor the efforts of, uh, the residents of this city as they partner with Kim. To bring awareness, uh, to stopping the violence. Uh, Caesar, I wanted to make sure that we are highlighting this, uh, internship program because. Not only have we for the third year in a row, uh, implemented, uh, a youth internship program with the young people of our community from Santa Fe ISD. Hitchcock ISD, as well as Texas City ISD, Dickerson ISD as well. Uh, but we, uh, also are, are working with the Texas Workforce Commission to provide other internship opportunities. And that has not been highlighted, and so this week I would like for us to highlight that as that is also a, a function of the Safe City Initiative. So I believe that we need to make sure that our community, community knows about that as well. Uh, the last thing I would like to ask you, Caesar. Is about the dais. It seems as though every time we come to sit at this dais, someone is lowering our seat. I've been sitting here for two hours and I just realized that my seat is lower than. Y'all seat. I'm looking. At the television, I'm trying to figure out why am I sitting lower than everybody? Do this. All right, there it is. Can we find out who's lowering our seats?
And who?
That's the crime of the century. Chief, can you, anyway? If there's nothing further, ladies and gentlemen, we had a time tonight. Uh, very efficient, very effective, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.